Could you please rise and join me in the pleasure of... I am the President of the United States of America and the United Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Hey, could you call the roll?
Harold?
Here.
Hollenbach?
Here.
Lee Otten?
Here.
Jeff?
Here.
Robinette?
Here.
Roland?
Here.
Sam Perdino?
Here. Okay, the minutes from our October 19th meeting were distributed prior. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? All right. Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, probably moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All same sign. Minutes are approved. Correspondents? Okay, do we have correspondents?
Uh, yes. This is dedicated to you prior to the meeting's beginning, where what the listing of budget transfers to be made for the month of November, and those require your approval.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the budget transfers? I'll move.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. All ready?
And then also, um, this was dedicated to you last week, um, in this copy before you, a couple of, um, appointments to city boards and commissions requested by the mayor. First one would be to the Historic Preservation Commission, Chris Moeen for a one-year term ending five thirty-one twenty-one, um, Jamie Alt to the Traffic Commission for a two-year term ending five thirty-one twenty-two, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, Matthew Bostor for a two-year appointment ending five thirty-one twenty-two, and those require your approval.
Okay. Do I have a, uh, motion? Let's go vote. We're all three.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded. All in favor of the appointments say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. All right, I would like to thank all three of these individuals for giving of themselves to the City of Bowling Green. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. Um, before we move on to lobby visitations, uh, we have some members of the Historic Preservation Commission that are here tonight. Uh, they have been working very hard and would like to go forward with making Bowling Green a certified local government, and they are here to give us a little insight on a piece of legislation that's before us tonight. If you'd like to come up.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Can we say your name, please?
My name is John Sampson. I'm the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. Um, and we do have two other members here with me, Dave West Barber and Will Roddenbush. So we'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak with the City Council this evening. As you may know, the Historic Preservation Commission was established last year by ordinance Mayor Dick Edwards with the charge of helping celebrate Bowling Green's rich, historic heritage. Just for fun, I'd like to share with you a few important historic facts and photos from the past. This is a map of a town from eighteen eighty-eight. And their nearly two-hundred his- year history includes the draining of the Great Black Swamp in eighteen sixty and their boomtown housing expansion, which dates back to eighteen eighty-seven. In our efforts to help preserve our heritage, the HBC, or the Historic Preservation Commission, hopes to establish in our community a certified local government. In nineteen sixteen, the U.S. Congress established the National Park Service within the Department of the Interior to be the steward not only of our national parks, but also of our monuments and historic objects. Fifty years later, in nineteen sixty-six, Congress enacted the National Historic Preservation Act, significantly increasing the stolen responsibilities of the National Park Service, including its resources of historic public and private buildings and homes. In Ohio, a specific implementation of these responsibilities was established in nineteen eighty-five when the National Park Service approved programs in our state called the Certified Local Government Programs, enabling towns and cities to enact historic preservation ordinances, ordinances which establish the legal basis for preserving and enumerating the standards which will apply to preservation efforts. The State Historic Preservation Office and Commerce shares joint responsibility with the National Park Service for administering this program. The CLG helps identify and protect historic sites and structures above offering financial resources such as tax credits and grant money. So a major HPC goal for this past year has been to draft the CLG, or Certified Local Government. We're excited now to present the City Council our proposed document. In Ohio, there are already seventy-eight certified local governments, including every major university town except Bowling Green. We're hopeful that Bowling Green will soon join these other communities in passing the ordinance. In spite of our nation's extraordinary and terrible experience with the current COVID pandemic, we believe that the adoption of this CLG ordinance will represent a special moment of hope, opportunity, and civic pride for our city and community. I would now invite Les Barber to highlight a few key points and benefits as you begin the process of reviewing and considering our proposed... Uh, Les Barber, real three, hard question. On the benefits and importance of this legislation in BG, I'd like to add something to the items on slide six. All residents of Bowling Green take real pride in the distinctive and historic architecture in our city, both in the downtown and in the older areas, especially those that are most heavily trafficked by residents and visitors alike. We take this pride not just for our own sense of pleasure at living in a community with a distinctive history, which I think we do, but also because we recognize how important the historic feel of our city is to groups like, for example, parents of prospective BG SU students and visitors from out of town who come here for our restaurants, shops, and for business at the Wood County Courthouse. This means that the appearance of our downtown and the historic corridor areas is critical. Thank God, I could read that without my pressure, I believe. These corridor areas, like West Worcester Street, obviously, uh, East Worcester Street, North Main, south of Poe, North Main, yeah, North Main, south of Poe, South Main, north of Napoleon, and the East Court Prospect Street area around the County Courthouse. However, these corridor areas are problematic in a university town like ours. A pattern there has been visible for years. We've talked about it in other contexts. Historic single-family homes are purchased and turned into rental units, while some landlords definitely take pains to preserve the historic features of such homes. Many do not, so that there is a kind of progression of neglect and disintegration. And we do recognize that some family homes have somewhat the same, same problem, not only one word. Uh, the ordinance is intended in part to stop any further loss in the distinctive historic architecture of Bowling Green. Okay, slide seven, please. Okay, some key points about the ordinance, and, uh, the first one is about what it does and especially what it doesn't do. The ordinance in front of you, if you, um, for first reading tonight, is based on a model that's provided by, and basically it's required by, the State Historic Preservation Office. It establishes the standards and rules for designating protected properties in Bowling Green, and it establishes the standards and rules for owners of designated or listed, as we call it in that ordinance, properties, designated or listed, listed historic properties if they subsequently wish to make changes to the exteriors of their buildings. It does not, this really needs to be emphasized, it does not designate or list any property or any district in and of itself. Only after this ordinance is approved by council, and only then, can specific properties or districts be recommended for listing and protection, and all of this only by separate legislation by council following the procedures that you follow for all legislation. So, in a very basic sense, this ordinance doesn't change the status of any property in Bowling Green whatsoever. No requirement is, or rule is levied on any property owner. The ordinance does only the two things. It fulfills the state and national requirement that the city has such an ordinance in place before proposals for protected properties or districts are considered by the commission and council. And number two, it sets the standards and rules for such, for such subsequent actions by the commission and council, as well as the standards and rules for the treatment of protected properties thereafter. So it does really, I think, only those three things. That's it, three things. Uh, on the topic of standards and rules, I want to highlight just a few of the most important ones, and these are the ones that I think you will probably want to make sure that you confirm as you study and consider the document. And these are the rules that, uh, would govern historic properties once they are designated. And... And, uh, the first thing that I want to emphasize is we're talking only about the exterior of buildings. There's nothing in this ordinance or in the process that we're planning that has anything whatsoever to do with the interiors of buildings. Second thing is that we decided to simplify everything and avoid possible ambiguities that might arise from trying to write our own standards and rules from scratch. So we are adopting the Secretary of the Interiors, this is a title now, standards for the treatment of historic properties. It's in your, the appendix of the document. You can read it and pay attention especially through, there are four sets. Pay attention especially to the one called rehabilitation, because that's the one that will govern ninety-nine percent of anything that would ever come before the commission and council if all of this subsequently happened, this ordinance amended, ordinance is establishing listed properties everywhere. Okay, so, important notes. We modify and soften the standards in a number of ways as specified in this ordinance, modifications that take precedence over the standard wherever there's any conflict or uncertainty. And we're doing that on purpose because we don't want the standards to be understood to be inflexible. But flexibility is a relative term, so we try to specify as best we can the types of flexibility, the types of softening that we want to prevail in this city. First of all, maybe most important to remember is that even after we have approved, have an approved CLG ordinance, this one, and we have subsequent city council approval of specific individual properties and/or districts, this ordinance makes it clear that no owners of historic properties will be automatically required to do anything. And this is a rule I had to take at first glance, but it's true. The ordinance would not require anybody, even if we get to the stage of having listed properties, to do anything with what exists when the ordinance, or when they are listed. If they wish to make no changes and only preserve the work that's there, they, that will be fine with the ordinance. Preservation is not governed by anything as proposed in this ordinance. It states specifically that preservation is defined in the standards as a matter for property owners to pursue on their own without application for a certificate of appropriateness, as we call it from the Historic Preservation Commission. And by the way, uh, one of the preservation efforts that's defined as being included as a matter of the owner's choice is the color of a house. We're not into determining house or building colors. Couple more things. We do recognize that many historic properties, buildings especially, will have nonhistoric exterior features when they're listed. You can think of them easily, things like, uh, well, downtown building lines, for example, or asphalt shingles and roofs that probably were wood shingles when they were built, aluminum or other sightings, uh, non-wooden doors, windows, that sort of thing. In all, in all of such cases, this ordinance allows preservation of those features, including replacement of small deteriorated sections, without having to come to the commission for any permission or certificate of appropriateness. As long as an impined material is being used and it looks the same, then we're not, we're not taking any rules about that. However, whenever full replacement of such features like these listed is necessary or desired, then the owners would be required to apply for a certificate of appropriateness before beginning the work, and they, according to the ordinance, say must, if possible, replace the features moving in a direction of greater historical authenticity. Doesn't have to be perfect, but at least it has to be moving in the right direction. Can't be worse. Along the same lines, just for downtown people, especially flat roofs, a lot of flat roofs on downtown buildings, they're not visible from what's called a buque corridor from the street. You can't see them, so owners can repair and replace those things without approaching the Historic Preservation Commission as long as they're not taking the elevation or the buque corridor. And then I'm getting very close to the end. Sorry, I'm doing the nitty-gritty work here. The legislation does not see in general that dictate every small detail of alteration, rehabilitation, restoration to listed property, even to the historic features. In relatively minor matters of historical detail, again, flexibility will be allowed in the certificate of appropriateness process. Examples would be things like, uh, choosing energy-efficient windows and doors that are not wooden. Okay, if they look more or less like the originals and the owner wanted to do that, we specify, that's okay. There are some others, but I won't put it, go into them. In addition, and this is the last thing I want to say, I think this would be important to a lot of people, at the back of historic buildings, a lot of flexibility about what has been done, because they are less visible, so even contemporary, more contemporary designs of additions at the rear of buildings will not be discouraged by the Historic Preservation Commission. Okay, so those seem thus to be the, the things that maybe you should be much aware of when you're reviewing the document. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much, and I would like to thank you all for the hard work that you've done. Um, John and I were both on the study committee when we were looking at creating a Historic Preservation Commission, and, uh, so I'm very excited these number of years later to see that we finally got to a place where we're considering a certified local government, so, thank you very much. Okay, this brings us to lobby visitations. Do we have anyone signed up for lobby visitations?
Not the people.
Introduction of new legislation. Mr. President? Mr. Sam Perdino. From the Community Improvement Committee, we have an ordinance creating and adopting Chapter one fifty-eight of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, regarding historic preservation and amending and adopting certain sections of Chapter thirty, thirty-two, thirty-five, thirty-eight, one fifty, and one fifty-two of the Codified Ordinances to reflect changes regarding historic preservation. And then, this is to be referred to the Planning Commission for their consideration, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That would be referred after the first reading, or now? At their meeting on Wednesday, they're going to look at it, right?
I'm not sure if I understand.
I'm not, not quite, Mr. President. Are you guys going to look at this before we give it its final reading?
Our plan was to put it on the December agenda, and then set it for a hearing that followed Monday, so that's tabled when it gets its first reading.
Okay, so it's in their hands now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, President. Is it in their hands now, or are we going to give it its first reading tonight? We're going to give it its first reading. Okay, thank you. That's all the new legislation. Official reports. Mr. May?
Good evening. I really don't have a specific report, but I did want to, um, express, as Council President Hollenbach did, my appreciation of the work of the Historic Preservation Commission. There's been a lot of work that has gone into the legislation that the council is considering, beginning to consider this evening. As many of you are aware, there's, uh, there was legislation on council that had the, several years ago, and we got to the point where we were going to give it its third reading, and it was tabled. It was tabled at that time because I think there was a great deal of misunderstanding about what the, what legislation was and what it's not going to do. It's clear to me that the members of the Historic Preservation Commission have given great care of reviewing the legislation and bringing a revised piece of legislation to council for your consideration that addresses many concerns that occurred a number of years ago. It's clear that they made, made great effort to make it flexible. You heard that word a lot this evening, and I just want to commend them for the work that they have done. I think this is an important first step. Um, I look forward to council's consideration of this legislation. Look forward to hearing any public, uh, feedback that we might have on it, and I will be certainly, I look forward to, um, signing this legislation if it is approved by council, but I think it's a very important process, so, thank you.
Any questions? Any questions for the mayor? I guess not, thank you very much. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Tredder.
Good evening. It's, uh, time for your semi-annual reminder to make sure I know all of you council members are on the city's email list to get important news from the City of Bowling Green. But anybody watching, please, uh, go to the city's website at BGOhio.org. We certainly are sending out a lot of things, and I will compliment the staff. The newsletter's looking really good. It's fun, it provides a lot of great information, and we think it's a great way for citizens to stay up to date with what's going on here at the City of Bowling Green. And one of the reasons that people may want to be watching is that our LEAP collection program is going to be launching on November ninth. So that's when we announce. Residents do not need to cull in about LEAP, so it is different from RUSH. And on our website, we hope to have a map of where we will be, and we'll be making, uh, two passes of the city once, once we begin, and then we will announce before we come on the final pass so people are aware of that. So we know we had a lot of wind yesterday. Our phones were ringing a lot today, asking that very question. When's LEAP, uh, collection starting? I thought I'd kind of remind you to please sign up, that, and you can give the information right to your phone computer or wherever else you'd like to get information. The other thing on my agenda this evening, uh, Mr. President, is to request an executive session at the end of the meeting to discuss a real estate matter, and we would not anticipate any action coming out of that. That concludes my report, so go to your questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Tredder? Um, yes, Laurie, so will there be two or three LEAP pickups?
Two.
Two total. Good, thank you very much. Planning Director?
No report. Just have questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Saylor? All right. Uh, let's see. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh?
No, I'm not.
Are there any questions for Mr. Marsh? As long as I can see, that's the rest of the list, so. Brings us to council committee reports.
Mr. Harold. The Transportation and Safety Committee met at six o'clock, uh, tonight and covered a few items that are related, of course, to transportation and or safety, but also were items that perhaps would, uh, have an impact on the formulation of the two thousand twenty-one budget. Uh, we, we covered, uh, um, the possibility of, uh, speeding up within, in a responsible manner, uh, implementation of a body camera system for the Bowling Green Police Division. We also, uh, recommended that, um, the sidewalk bicycle path or multi-use path from the Bowling Green High School area to the community center, as well as Covens Crossing, be, uh, a, a priority in terms of putting together the engineering, not the construction, but the engineering, so that sometime next year, we'll know what it would look like and what it would cost to implement, and, uh, that path. So, those were the major two items to be accomplished by the committee.
Okay, are there any other council committee reports?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd just like to update the council on some upcoming, uh, important dates for the Finance Committee. On Monday, November ninth at five P.M., there'll be a joint meeting of the Utilities Board of Utilities and the Finance Committee to review the twenty twenty-one utility budget. On Thursday, December third at five P.M., uh, the committee will meet again on twenty twenty-one non-utility budget, uh, items. And then, just for everyone's, uh, information, uh, the plan for the budget process within, with the full council will begin with a first reading on December seventh, uh, with the goal of having a, a second, third reading and a vote on December twenty-first. I point this out because this year there will not be a separate, special end-of-the-year meeting. We will be able to accomplish, uh, our budget requirement using the two of the already scheduled December meetings. And that's all.
Uh, thank you. Any other council committee reports? Uh, yes, Mr. President, just a reminder to all that, uh, this Saturday, November seventh at ten a.m., we'll be resuming our discussion of rental registro, uh, registration, uh, registration slash licensing, uh, in, in the chamber here, and, um, it'll just be, uh, discussion will be a committee of the whole this time, of course, as opposed to the separate committee. I'm aware there'll be no public input at that meeting. It'll be a discussion amongst several members, but I'm unsure if there will be, uh, public allowed to be in the room on that night, about ten morning. Uh, will there be available space for, uh, any citizens? Very limited space. But we'll be on, okay. Yeah, it'll be upon the, yeah, that's the key thing. And I, it's been requested that during that meeting on Saturday, since a certain member of the press will not be...
of the press will not be here, but will be watching it, that we lean into our microphones and talk quite clearly, so. Excellent time to bring that up. Well, otherwise I would forget. So, this Saturday at 10:00 a.m.
Okay, Mr. President, the, the member of the press requested every council member do that, or just certain compliments?
I think it was just sort of a blanket, okay? I, I just wondered if there was some compliments they'd rather not give. Well, if you hadn't asked. Okay, and along those lines also, I asked as chairman of the Community Improvement Committee, I asked that John give us a little summation of the committee's findings at the beginning of that meeting, and I hope to put together a very brief agenda that just sort of outlines what will be happening, and hopefully have that emailed to you before Friday. Any other Council Committee Reports? Brings us to the reading of legislation.
Legislation for first reading, ordinance number 8878 for first reading, ordinance creating and adopting Chapter 158 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding historic preservation and amending and adopting certain sections of Chapter 30, 32, 35, 38, 150, and 152 of the Codified Ordinances to reflect changes regarding historic preservation. Legislation for second reading, ordinance number 8873 for second reading, ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.04 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio relative to pain scales for seasonal employees. Ordinance number 8874 for second reading, ordinance vacating utility use at 1438 Conneat Avenue. Ordinance number 8875 for second reading, ordinance authorizing utility directives to advertise for business and turn to a contract or contracts for supplying annual inventory requirements, underground and overhead line insurance, sale of scrap materials, and participation in the AMP joint purchasing program in 2021. Ordinance number 8876 for second reading, ordinance authorizing utility directives to advertise for business and turn to a contract or contracts for carbon dioxide chemical feed system at the water treatment plant. Ordinance number 8877 for second reading, ordinance authorizing utility directives to advertise for business and turn to a contract or contracts for elevator repairs at the water treatment plant. Legislation for third reading, resolution number 3778 for third reading. Resolution implementing Section 3735.65 through 3735.70 of the Ohio Revised Code, establishing and describing the boundaries of the Bowling Green Community Reinvestment Area Number 7 in the city of Bowling Green and designating housing officers for administrative programs.
Mr. President?
Ms. Prince?
I move to adopt resolution 3778.
Okay, properly moved consecutive page, which called me.
Howland?
Yes.
Leonis?
Yes.
Yes. Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Dan Perdino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Okay, so, resolution 3778 is adopted.
Resolution number 3779 for third reading, resolution implementing Section 3735.65 through 3735.70 of the Ohio Revised Code, establishing and describing the boundaries of the Bowling Green Community Reinvestment Area Number 8 in the city of Bowling Green and designating housing officers for administrative programs.
Mr. President?
Ms. Prince?
I move to table resolution 3779 until our November 16th meeting. We need an opportunity to review that language one more time.
Beginning November 16th?
November 16th, yes.
Have a second?
Second.
Properly moved in consecutive page, which called me.
Leonis?
Yes.
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Dan Perdino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hold on.
Yes, okay, so, resolution 3779 is tabled until our November 16th meeting.
Ordinance number 8870 for third reading, ordinance amending and adopting Section 37.0 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding city fees and fees for services.
Mr. President, Mr. Robinette?
I move to adopt ordinance 380.
Second.
Properly moved in consecutive, okay?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Dan Perdino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Howland?
Yes.
Leonis?
Yes.
So, ordinance 3870 is adopted. We'll now move into executive session.
I think I've been, are to that portion being made, just wanted to do what I think we would have long been done, and that is encourage everyone that hasn't voted yet, important, everyone that hasn't voted yet, to vote tomorrow, and there certainly have been many, many different messages sent out, encouraging people to vote, and I would like to think that implies in those multiple messages of exercising your right to vote would be, that it be an educated, well-researched vote. So, I would encourage everyone, do the, do your work to get prepared to vote. I was talking with someone at work today, and I mentioned how their college age son was, oh, in, in absentee ballot, and went up to their room, spent an hour just on the internet, going to various websites, and really, really thoroughly researching who this person was going to vote for, and you would think that in today's times, with the abundance of information, that would be easier to find out about people, but I would say that there's an added dimension of the different perspectives that different websites have that, in a sense, might actually make it more difficult to come up with that, an educated vote. But, my message is, get out there and vote in a responsible manner, that's how this will run.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette? Yeah, I'd just like to make a brief comment. The current situation with COVID, I, so, I got a really interesting email, like, from the high school, to shoot out everybody, and it just reminded me of how successful it could be, but the message regarded the Northern Lane Street, and they just wrapped up the Frog Sports scene, the Northern Lane Street, that they, they scored, and the comment was that of the varsity sports, 124 to 127 scheduled varsity sporting events happen. But, that's just varsity, that doesn't mention the JV and the press. The reason I bring that up, is it should be a reminder to us, the organizations, the case of a league that runs, beat different athletic groups, and they put their minds to it, and find ways to make this happen, keep some normalcy alive, and I just commend all those, those folks who love doing that. That's just one, might as well applaud them of it, athletics, but I just saw that reporter came out just a couple hours ago, you know, and I just, I just want to commend everyone involved in making that happen, and remind all of us that we have an obligation to do everything in our power to keep all order, the lives of organizations, that's moving forward safely.
All right, is there any other business, I guess, where we have other business to come before council session, so, anybody else have anything? I hope that we, the one, the executive session could be separated. Properly, we've been saying to them all in favor?
All right.
Is it all, all?
Yeah.
Okay, and we